All right. Good evening. I'm calling to order...
It was me.
The November 29, 2023 meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, we have on the agenda continuation, the hearing for the 40B at Park Central. The plan was to discuss the traffic study. I would say, based on what we've received as a board for legal advice and memos, we actually did want to start out initially by addressing that. And I'd actually like Mr. Tallemann to tee us up on it.
So is this on or do I have to...
Hold on. Okay. So when we were together last at the first session, what we did was identify particular agreement, covenant and restrictions, by and between the developer and some neighbors to the property. And that was brought to our attention. It was addressed by the Select Board in their comments to the Mass Housing. Mass Housing, in turn, said that the board should explore this issue and it should be discussed. There was some initial discussion at that first session. And so as to round out the issue, because there's a real significant debate by and amongst, you know, talented and experienced attorneys, what we directed the parties to do, and by the parties, I mean, the applicant and then the neighbors are represented by two different lawyers, directed them to provide memoranda to me and to Laura, Laura, and that I would take a look at them and I would provide some thoughts to the board on how we might deal with this. And it is a complicated issue. We did receive memos from counsel for all those parties. They were thorough. They went into issues that are probably beyond what we need to get into. They raised good arguments all the way around. And again, to recap a little bit, the dispute by and between all those parties is pending in land court now as to how that document is going to be considered and interpreted. The pendency of that land court action is the basis for one of the positions taken by the applicant, that this board can't or shouldn't, but can't, is the assertion, look into that issue. I don't buy that. I don't buy it jurisdictionally and I don't buy it factually. I think it is a live issue for a number of reasons. First of all, from a factual perspective, it clearly affects how this project might be before you and the limitations of this developer to pursue that project. So separate and apart from an issue of what we would call site control, which is proving that you have some kind of color of title to do what you're doing, I think from a factual perspective, it's still an important document. And the jurisdiction that the land court enjoys over this issue is not exclusive. This board enjoys jurisdiction over any factual matter that touches, influences, or has a material effect on the proceeding before you. I take some issue with the notion that we also have to consider the actions of Mass Housing to be infallible when it comes to site control and that if they make errors as to the impact of a particular document that exists on the title of these properties, then I think you are free to examine it and question it. I don't think we even have to go that far. So I think we could presume, for the sake of argument, that we don't have to touch that site control issue, because I think there is a significant impact here by this restriction. It is clear, and I think this is essentially a fact, that this project proposes things that would be prohibited under that restriction, including access along certain ways. The issue that I've zeroed in on, though, is not so much the back and forth between the applicant and the neighbors as to particular elements of that restriction. And there were some obligations that appeared not to have been met under that restriction, including the recording of a separate restriction against use of certain ways that apparently was never done. That's between them. All I'm concerned about is, does it impact what's before you? And what I've done is kind of focus in on whether or not this agreement is actually applicable to the project that is before you now. There is a clause in the agreement, in the covenants and restrictions, that states that the applicant can terminate that, those set of restrictions, and they have the right to do. And that's a very powerful tool for them. And they've actually given notice of termination as of July. What that provision says is that if they terminate, they cannot proceed with any applications to any permitting entity within two years of that termination if, if the project before that entity is the same or substantially similar to the project that was at issue previously, in the prior round of both a 40B and a non-40B project that were kind of tethered together. There is an assertion by the neighbors who enjoy the benefit of that restriction and to the extent there's any ambiguity in that, those terms similar or substantial, then presumptions would weigh in their favor. But there is an assertion by them that this is substantially similar. And I'm going to kind of abbreviate it, but it's, I think what they would suggest is, this is a really big residential project in an area that can't support a residential, these projects conventionally. I know that that's overly simplifying the argument. The argument by the applicant, and I'll oversimplify that too, is like, look at it. It's clearly different. Those were townhouses. These are more like garden-style units. Yes, there might be similar density on half this project, but it is, it's clearly different. Just look at it. And I think both are interesting and good arguments. I would add to that argument, and there's a side, bit of a side argument by the applicant that, well, we're only developing on half. It's roughly 60% of the total units or thereabouts that was previously proposed. To that, I don't think that that's a particularly strong argument, because A, the restriction itself talked about either component of the prior project, and it made that reference over and over again. So I think that whether it's on this side of the main roadway going in or on that side of the main roadway going in, clearly, there was some contemplation of kind of segmenting those two. So I'm not sure that that's particularly a strong argument in that regard. I'd also submit that, as we know, we don't have anything before us as to what they're proposing on the other side of the main roadway. Clearly, as based on past proposals, there could be a substantially dense project on that roadway that they are reserving for themselves. They've received the benefit of zoning approvals in the past for that area, so it could be forthcoming again. And in fact, I think we talked at the first hearing about, hey, what are your plans for that? And we did not get much in the way of a response there. But I think we, it would be safe to assume that, based on the current proposal as well as the past proposal, that there's at least an interest in doing something substantially sizable over there. Regardless, I think the board has an interesting decision that they have to make here. And you have to consider all these facts. The reason why I'm going through them is, this is all going to factor into the way you come out on this. And that is that if you find that the proposal before you kind of triggers that similar, you know, substantially similar project, then they don't have a right to be here under that document. Now, whether we characterize that as jurisdictional, whether this board has jurisdiction over it because of this particular instrument, which I think is a reasonable position, or whether as a factual matter, there's an instrument of title that prevents them from actually applying, either way, that would be a substantial blow to this project being able to go forward now. Now, you may decide the other way. It's not substantially similar. Look at it. It's different. In which case, we march on. That provision is clearly not applicable, and they are fine before you. And that's a legitimate decision that you could make. Now, the question then becomes, well, what happens if you decide anywhere along the spectrum? Either A, it triggers the provision and thereby there should have been a two-year wait. Or B, we're not quite sure. You know, let's see how the land court action comes out, you know, kind of somewhere a middle position. Or C, oh, it definitely doesn't trigger it. Let's carry on with this 40B application. If it's A, then you have a weighty decision to make if you make the finding that it is similar. I would suggest that if you feel that it's a barrier to even being here, you may wish to consider whether or not we should keep going with this in the meantime. And it could be along the lines of a denial without prejudice or what have you. You could equally say, this is a problem, but we're going to hold it in abeyance. And this kind of goes to the B. And we'll go through this, but we'll say at the end of the day, if there's an approval, you fix this. You make sure you comply or you, as a condition of approval. Or, and obviously, see, no change. We keep hearing, we'll talk to traffic people, engineering people, architects, and carry on here. That's a decision you can make. Of course, there are options for the applicant, too. The applicant could change this project so that it complies with the restrictions. There are some that the neighbors' attorneys have pointed out that this project violates. And if the applicant chose, they could easily, I don't know how easily, I shouldn't say that, it's their money and their time, but they could revise this project so that it was faithful to all the prior restrictions and conditions that were promised after good faith discussion. And in fact, I think a neutral was involved as well in the presentation and completion of all those conditions. So the applicant could do that. The applicant has also suggested to you all that this is a land court matter and should be resolved by the land court. And ultimately, the land court certainly has a say in this. It may make a decision sometime in six months. It may make a decision as Attorney Timon suggested in 2025. If the applicant wanted to, they could kind of ask this board to hold this in abeyance until we know for sure what the land court decides on this. In which case, you know, it does raise an issue. If we decide here that, well, we think it's substantially similar to, or substantially similar enough to trigger that two-year wait cooling off period, and then the land court disagrees, then I would suggest that it would be ripe again for the applicant to resume matters here. I think we would have to cede to that, to the land court decision. That doesn't mean, in my opinion, that you have to wait. You have a project before you right now. The project is impacted by instruments of record that Mass Housing has specifically said you should be looking at and discussing during your public hearing. So I think you have the authority to wrap your hands around this, as difficult as that may be, and consider all the factors about what is intended. There's obviously a difference of opinion as to what was intended with substantially similar there. You sit in a quasi-adjudicatory fashion. You have every right to interpret these documents in accordance with your fact-finding mission as members of the Board of Appeals. So should you choose to take that on and make a finding, one way or the other, I think that would influence what happens next in this proceeding. Either we have a full, robust hearing or we have something less than that, and maybe at some point in the future, we resume after cooling off periods are over or otherwise. So.
Thank you. Yeah, Mike, do you want to...
And this was a question that I had at a last meeting. And I said, I had asked, you know, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. And you had suggested that we move forward because if we don't, we would be put into a poorer position later. And I'm not, I'm trying to understand the consequences, because what I, from my vantage point here, I see that there's an agreement and a declaration of restrictive covenants that are between the two private parties. As the two private parties that the town is not party of, it's my understanding that we cannot amend, abrogate, or disregard the agreement.
You have no authority to waive.
We have no, we can't, we can't make a wave.
Right.
But the plain reading of the agreement specifically states that the petitioner shall not submit any application or any permit or approval from a local or state board, substantially similar, which is the key question, for a period of two years. So if we can't disregard that, how can we move this ball forward if there's a clear prohibition against an application?
Right.
So if we say, and everybody's, we've got to figure out if this is substantially similar to a degree or not, but what's the consequence? And this was my issue and kind of question last time, is, we have a recorded agreement between the parties that says, the petitioner shall not submit an application for permanent approval. I can't disregard that. That's...
I don't think you should disregard it, which is why we're having the conversation. And I'm glad you brought up the point I made before. I think what I suggested maybe inartfully prior is there are kind of two ways to go here, and there's risks and benefits for any action.
That's what I want to understand.
We know, and I'm not going to get into risks and benefits too much. That's strategy discussions that we would have in a private setting. But to the extent that this board said, sorry, we can't ignore this. We think it applies. We're going to deny without prejudice. Come back and see us in two years, or a year and nine months about now. And there was an appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. Then, the Housing Appeals Committee has a lot of authority. It is not particularly municipally friendly, although we had a recent decision just a week or so ago on a somewhat related issue that regarded a potential waiver of something that the Housing Appeals Committee found they had no power to waive, or that the board had no power to waive. So this issue has been discussed in several different cases. The Groton case, the Wells case, and now a Lunenburg case that my office handled. And we were involved in the Groton case as well. So what happens when you get to the Housing Appeals Committee? Well, I would suggest that if we go, if we suggested now that it was either jurisdictional or quasi-jurisdictional or just a factual bar to you taking action on this, because the neighbors certainly haven't waived this provision and this application wouldn't be properly before you, that that would probably be motion practice at the Housing Appeals Committee. There might be some fact-finding that goes along with it, too, I suppose, but they would have to decide whether or not we were right or wrong. And if it happens early in the process, my general assumption, and there's certainly other further appeals beyond the Housing Appeals Committee, too, my assumption would be, hey, board, you were wrong. We think it was overreached. We're sending it back. There's been no fact-finding yet. There's been no, like, traffic or engineering, and none of the parties spinning their wheels on that.
And again, this just brings everything back. If we allow the petitioner to move forward with this prohibition, we as a board are now violating this agreement if we feel that it's a substantially similar agreement. So now, that's what I'm concerned about from liability from the obatters as well.
So I wouldn't even put it in terms, because we're not bound by the agreement in the same way that the two parties...
Understood.
An injunction could go against us.
But we're amending or disregarding a clear provision of that agreement. So I want to make sure I understand where directions to go.
We would be operating in contravention of that. We could be held to the requirements of that through an injunction by the courts, certainly.
Okay.
But no one could really sue us for violating per se.
Okay.
They could sue us as a party that has to comply with it. This is lawyer stuff, so, Mike, I don't want to get too far in the weeds.
And I get that. I just wanted to make sure I understood where...
I do want to point out, though, there's another important component to this. This project shows a subdivision. The subdivision, and they want this board to provide some subdivision relief here, some subdivision decisions, and that's fine under 40B. There is a line of case law. It's, I think the leading case on it is Parker v. Blackbrook Realty, which says that not only does a planning board, and you're sitting in the shoes of the planning board for the purposes of subdivision control, not only does the planning board have the authority to assess issues of title to determine whether or not the project is feasible or the access is feasible, and there is an access issue here. In that case, they said there is a positive duty legally on the planning board in the sense of a subdivision to undertake that analysis. So, and that's an appellate-level decision that charges the board with the authority to review that on a factual level, whether or not there's a barrier to building what they're proposing, especially when it comes to access. And here, one of the primary objections is that they have proposed some access that is not consistent with the promises that were made under that restriction.
Clearly. Okay.
All right. Doris or Doug, did you have opinions on what we're going with this?
I definitely feel like it's a serious impediment, right? It brings a lot of lack of clarity as to what we should be doing, from my perspective. I do feel like we're violating an agreement, you know, if we continue to hear it. I don't know what the best option is to move forward, right? I'd prefer it be held in abeyance or a project comes back that's in, you know, conforming to the agreement. But it definitely is an impediment, because the project does not line up with the agreement. And it's not clear that we can approve a project or take it further without understanding it better. So those are at least my initial thoughts.
Thank you. Doris?
In good faith, I'm actually seeing the project as similar and also in breach of a contract that I'm not party to. And what I mean by similar is that the subdivision is only one part of the parcel, and I don't see it as dissimilar making a townhouse versus a garden apartment. It's, with the original project, I think it was 400, and this project's 200. They're both townhouses and possible rentals. So that's, I have a broad view of the word similar, not a narrow view of similar. I think they're similar. I think there's a breach, but I'm not a lawyer. I think there's a breach between the two private parties. So in good faith, I have a problem with moving forward.
Okay.
I would, I've actually come to the same conclusion. I did speak with Jay, and I spoke with Mike separately. I know that that's one of the key things here, is, is this substantially similar or substantially different? And I know that is, can be a very technical and legal argument, but I would say to the layman, it's kind of, it strains credibility, I think, a bit to say it's substantially different. I mean, it's, you're putting a project in the same area. You've got a similar size to it. I think that's a bit of a stretch. I think what, you know, my concern is that we spend all this time going forward and we wait on this decision to be made. Do we need to do that and then find out that, you know, that we're in fact in violation of it and they can't go forward? So part of my concern is wasting everybody's time as well.
Yeah. I feel strongly about that as well. It's from the petitioner's standpoint, from the obatter's standpoint, from, literally, for those of us with families up here, I mean, the idea that, you know, that, and again, if land court finds that the agreement is no good, if it's invalid or if they think it's different, that's for the judges at land court to decide. But in front of me, I see a black and white restriction that says, the applicant shall not even file the application. And so by allowing them to move the ball forward, I feel like we're allowing that breach to occur. They can argue that the contract is invalid for six different reasons, but that's for the judge to decide. For me, I see a recorded restriction on title that says, the petitioner shall not move forward.
Okay.
And from a risk perspective, because a few of you mentioned it, is, I'm not particularly concerned about making this decision early, because I think any court, certainly, and I think even likely the Housing Appeals Committee would say, hey, you got it wrong, or if they got it wrong.
Right.
Or if the land court, by the time we wind our way through some of that, decides on a contrary thing, the normal course would be a remand and let's get to it.
Yeah.
In fact, I mean, they're not going anywhere. He owns the property. We're going to see this project in one form or another at some point. Now, I still think, to the extent you're leaning in that particular direction, we should hear from them as to whether or not they may be interested in either holding things in abeyance or perhaps revising, taking their time to think about revising the project so as to make it consistent with the promises that they made to the neighbors. I do think if you come out on the side of, like, this restriction precludes us from acting substantively right now, then you may wish to not take further evidence on the substantive elements of the project and make a decision based on that. Because I do think it is a kind of go-no-go issue, to kind of put it in a more vernacular and plain-spoken terms, as to whether or not you can be here or not be here. You can't be, hey, well, we can't hear the project, but we'll kind of hear it a little.
Yeah, no. That's why, yeah.
All right.
So I'm a bit with Mike on the no-go. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
I'm just so, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, because...
Well, I think we should hear from the applicant.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to listen, go further, and hear from the applicant, so we're moving a little bit further ahead.
Well, I think on this, on this issue itself, like, I don't, I'm not saying, let's continue on with the traffic study.
Right.
I'm saying, I'm sure that Mr. Panels has some arguments that he'd like to make here to counter what we've been discussing here.
What would help me is, in some of those arguments, if you're prepared or not on the topic, is where other options looked at, other access points looked at, knowing what it seems, knowing there was an agreement out there, to actually get this project to move forward at a future date.
Right.
It is a question. I don't know, it is a question. It's a question, why are we on the same road two years later, three or four years later?
Well, and we disagree respectfully with that.
Sure.
We do not believe this is similar, the same or substantially similar. We were asked to write a letter on October 11, briefing this issue as to the preclusive effect of this agreement to moving forward. We wrote that letter. We extensively briefed the issue, and we came down on the conclusion, consistent with a long line of Housing Appeals Committee holdings, that, and I'm going to summarize. I mean, I set this forward in a rather extensive letter, so I don't want to...
I read the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all read it.
So that's why I don't want to go into the minutia and the detail of it, but I will point out that the Housing Appeals Committee has ruled that disputes over property rights between parties, and that's what this is. Make no mistake about it, that's what this is. It is a property rights dispute or not within the jurisdiction... It is a property rights dispute, are not within the jurisdiction conferred by Chapter 40B, but rather should be left to the courts. And they went on further in another case to more forcefully say, if and to the extent there remains any dispute about whether the developer will infringe upon the property rights of a third party, that dispute must be resolved in a court of competent jurisdiction in a case between parties with legal standing. We rely on that. That is clear and unambiguous. So what wasn't discussed as an alternative is if the, if you deny this outright, and I'm not suggesting this is a threat, we will obviously appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. And the other opportunity, and that's a de novo process by which they act instead of the board, and they may not remand it back to you. They may take the whole thing. They may go through a certain level of peer review, and they may decide this for the town, imposing conditions that they think are appropriate for the project. That is a real possibility, in which case the town loses almost entire control and a seat at the table, not only the town, but the folks who have the most at stake here. And I'm, again, I'm not saying that is a threat, but I'm saying that is a real possibility that ought to be considered. We are very confident in our position, and again, we respectfully disagree with Jay, that based on those Housing Appeals Committee decisions, that if the Housing Appeals Committee isn't going to weigh in on a private property dispute, they're not going to let a zoning Board of Appeals weigh in with that property dispute is currently being litigated. And Mr. Robbins talked a little bit about the holding in the 135 Wells Avenue case. Let's not all lose the forest through the trees on what that, what that decision meant. What that decision meant, and it's not shocking or surprising, stands for the unremarkable, and I wrote this in a letter that I sent to you.
I read that, I read that today as well.
Proposition that only a court, not a zoning board, not a permit-granting authority, not the Housing Appeals Committee, can create an alter change of property rights, including easements or restrictive covenants. It's up to the courts to do that.
But that's my point.
Yeah.
That was exactly my point. We have a, we have a restriction that says the petitioner shall not. So if we ignore that restriction, we are then violating this agreement.
You're not. By, in my, in my humble opinion, you are not violating the agreement, because the agreement is not for you, in our opinion, to consider. It is actively being disputed. It is actively in litigation.
So, but there's a key thing I think we should distinguish here, and I'm not trying to interrupt your flow overly.
And then...
I'm very familiar with all these Housing Appeals Committee cases, having litigated for 20 years before the Housing Appeals Committee. First of all, I have vast disagreements with the way the Housing Appeals Committee conducts itself. But this is not that, those issues. This is not a dispute as to some ambiguous property line thing, or what you can't do. This is dispute that directly affects whether
Exactly.
you can move forward.
Exactly.
So you are a party to it, essentially. Not a party per se, but
Couldn't agree more.
this isn't those disputes.
That, to me, is the merrow.
You are not weighing into whether or not they're right or wrong about any particular disagreement.
I'll let the judge decide that.
Right. There is a barrier
That's it.
to you acting in this.
That, that, to me, is
Or to them even submitting.
Break this down for me if you can, but...
My response to that is, the barrier is not for you to consider. The court is actively considering that and determining it.
They don't, find a case that says they have exclusive jurisdiction over the factual nature of that question.
I cited the Housing Appeals Committee case.
It's not a case. That's an administrative decision.
I'm sorry, but that's...
Find a case that says that they do not have jurisdiction to consider facts that might impact whether or not they can even receive an application, and you can't cite to that. And I've looked for those cases, and they just don't exist. So, I mean, my concern is, isn't so much that we weighed into neighbor X over neighbor Y. My concern is that we, that restriction set up a specific process that affects what this board does. As I said when I started, there are a number of disagreements between your client and the neighbors. I'm not getting involved in those. This board shouldn't get involved. What we are getting involved in is something that affects whether or not this application is properly before them.
But by making that determination, we're the very question of whether the agreement is valid. By making that determination, this board is getting right in the middle of that litigation and adjudication.
I was going to say, with respect, you're forcing us to get involved. You are not waiting for the court of law to decide.
That's it.
I'm going to be honest. You have come before, you're in dispute, and you've said, the court is the one that should decide. Okay, even if we agree with that, the court should decide. You are not here with the court having decided that issue. You guys are in dispute, and you're forcing us into a very awkward position. And that, I think, is disingenuous for us.
That's exactly it.
So, so procedurally, it's really hard for us to think about how we can move forward here, right?
It might be one of those things where we state, and we should state clearly, if you were going to make this decision and go down this road, is, we are left with no guidance on this. If the land court decides differently, we will gladly accept a remand or a reapplication on this
Gladly.
project. But right now, they're putting you in a position of potentially just acting without the guidance.
That is how I feel. I feel like I'm being put in the shoes of the land court by deciding whether this restriction, whether in whole or in part, is valid or invalid.
Right.
And by, again, assuming that the parties negotiated in good faith, hired counsel, drafted, signed, and recorded this agreement that specifically prohibits an application, and then we're supposed to say, oh, no, that's in dispute, we're going to allow this to move forward. That's where we're being put in the shoes to make that decision, which I don't think is prop, we can't change that agreement.
I also think that, given those circumstances and the position, the unenviable position that you're in, that there is very, very low likelihood that the Housing Appeals Committee would assume jurisdiction over a project where no peer review has happened at all. I've had a great number of cases before the Housing Appeals Committee where preliminary disputes over whether or not it should remand back. The Housing Appeals Committee does not want to replicate the job that local boards do. And in fact, all of their guidance says that they don't. If this was a good-faith decision to say, we can't be here, my experience with the Housing Appeals Committee is that even though we often disagree with them on the municipal side, that they will send it back and say, hey, do your job, we disagree.
So, I understand. So, in deference to you, and I want to listen, and I want to listen to the, about the project, in the simplest terms possible, knowing there's this covenant, express why was another access point, and I have some knowledge of the project and the prior project, but why are we here, except for emergency uses, I think, with the covenant, so why are we here not putting the road in another direction and placing the burden now on Route 9, and going through that process possibly?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so rather than take us to housing court, I mean,
No, no.
I was like, represent the project.
Look, look, I did not pose that as a threat. I really
No, no.
I didn't come across that.
No, you couldn't possibly threaten me.
Well...
I don't think so.
But beyond that, I...
But, you know, you go to housing court, you go, you've got every right to go to housing, yeah, you have every right to do that.
Sure.
I think you can get a sense of where this board is, is right now.
I was going to say, I think you had more that you wanted to say.
You had more. I want to hear, I want to, I want to hear what you have to say. I don't want to just...
So, the consideration was, first of all, and you will hear it, or you would have heard it if you're, if you're inclined to go forward with the traffic presentation, but you heard it on October 11, when we gave the larger 30,000-foot overview of the project. We made great effort to restrict the access on that side through, if you recall, the Blackthorne Drive extension. It's a gated access point that is, that would be coordinated through fire and police apparatus emergency, but would also be restricted to access from, access from and access to the site by the residents only. It's not a cut-through for people coming on Route 9 to go down the proposed John Boland Road and get to the backside of those neighborhoods. That's not what...
You did explain that at the last meeting in very good detail.
Yeah.
But you can't go out the other way. You hadn't pursued that. You can't go out the edge of Flag, down through, let's say, was it the medical office building or by the Red Roof Inn, or?
Well, that is, that is an access point that's been presented as well. It's just a very long, it's a 17-acre, well, actually, no, a 21-acre parcel that we've proposed, as opposed to the 60 acres that was proposed in that 2015 concept plan. I don't want to get into the merits of the differences between the projects. Again, that's being litigated. I'm not even involved in that litigation. So I don't want to get into what happened in 2015 and what we're proposing now. They're, in our opinion, two different projects, and we want to focus on this, this one. There are access points proposed. We did have a power, we do have a PowerPoint prepared, but I don't know if you can see that.
I received that, this after today, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's our PowerPoint presentation.
Right.
It's all based on the traffic study. So you can see, Sam, I'm going to need your help. By the way, for the record, I'm Jason Panos, practicing law at 246 Andover Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
And I'm joined by Sam Gregorio from Tech, who prepared the traffic study. And online is John Bowler, John Cusich from Bowler Engineering, representing the applicant. So, Sam, this is that Park Central Drive, Egress Point, and then
Access Point.
Access Point, one-way, one-way out from
John Boland Room.
John Boland Road to Flag, right?
To Flag.
To Flag.
Right north of Route 9.
Yeah, so that's the Route 9 side, if you will. And then there's that very limited access point through Blackthorne Drive extension that I explained to you, gated, emergency access, and Park Central, residents only, not cut-through by anyone else. It would be PACS key protected, that type of thing. So that's what we designed in deference to, to the neighbors. And the reason why we designed it that way is because it is a large, it's a, it's a 21-acre parcel, but it stretches out lengthwise. And so there are garden-style, low-rise buildings proposed, if you recall, for buildings, and it's really for convenience of access on those buildings located on the, on the north side of the property.
Okay.
But again, restricted. Now, are we amenable, you started asking the question, I think, earlier, are we amenable to revising the application to confirm, conform
Conform.
with the, with the tenants of the agreement? I'm not going to say no, absolutely, because I just haven't, I'm not in a position to find my...
Right, no, we understand, yeah, I understand that for sure, yeah.
Yeah, and perhaps that's an option as well, to further explore those avenues, those discussions. Has there been any settlement discussion among the litigating parties? I can't speak to that. I just haven't been involved enough with the litigation to know those nuances. And I think they're so preliminary in the process that I don't think any kind of a settlement discussion like that would, would have unfolded at this juncture, but I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. And is it possible you will accelerate those discussions? Perhaps?
Okay.
Perhaps. So are we amenable to reforming the plans? I can't say.
Okay.
I legitimately cannot.
If you want time to think about it?
Cannot speak to that. I think it's appropriate if that's an option on the table. You know, the other, if you want to hold this project in abeyance for a couple of years on your docket, while the land court matter, I think that was another option that you posed.
That would be an option for you, but would you want to
Well, you would have to...
want to hold it in abeyance for a month while you talk to your client about whether or not
What, for, for
conform to the...
Through a continued continuance?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, all the options are on the table. Does a month give Amato Bocino, who is the litigation attorney on the land court side, because it may impact that, enough time to kind of regroup and have those discussions with the litigating parties? Because if that happens, the litigation, I would imagine, goes away too.
Well, if you're complying with the restriction...
There is no reason. Keep in mind, the litigation was filed as a, as a determination, as a declaration of rights, declaration of property rights. So that's what we put forward in the application, to have some limited restricted access? Is it to the T of what the restriction says? No, because we've taken the position it's a different project.
Okay.
That's for the land court to decide, to decide and adjudicate. Are we open to having the discussion and revising the application? I would, I would suggest yes.
Okay. Well, what about, what about Mr. Talon's suggestion about taking
A continuance.
a continuance and taking a month to consider that?
I don't think a month would probably be enough.
Maybe not. But, but, but I mean, I think the very first point was
Yeah.
to conform with what's in the agreement.
Yes.
And I don't know, I don't know if that's, a month is sufficient, two months? I really don't know, but that, I think, would be one of the first questions to get answered.
It's hard to say.
If it's done once in conformance with the, with the restriction, I imagine it could be, I'm not trying to diminish
Right.
the importance of traffic analysts and civil engineering, all of that.
But I imagine if it was done once, it could be done again.
Done again, correct.
You know, there was a kind of a hybrid that Attorney Talerman mentioned, which is, you know, move forward and comply with the decision of the court.
Why, it is not a recommendation. If the board...
It's an option, yeah, correct.
My recommendation was that if they felt strongly that there was a problem with the application being here in its current state, that they not do that. That was my recommendation. They could. Then they really increase the risk of having the Housing Appeals Committee, if they make that decision later, take jurisdiction, because then there would have been factual exploration. I don't think that that is a wise idea. I think this is, again, a kind of you're in or you're out
Yes.
kind of thing.
Okay.
I think if that were what the rest of the board wanted to do, I don't know if I want to use the word happy, but I guess I'll use the word happy. Neighbors went into that agreement, and I, I'm not an attorney, I'm another profession. They went into that agreement in, in good faith. But to make those, make those neighbors happy, that's what I think. Get the litigation down to zero. So I'm not an engineer. I've only had many engineering clients. Come up with something creative to make our neighbors happy. And I know it's not just one neighbor, it's quite a few neighbors.
Can we... Can we, before I agree to a continuance, can we take a brief recess so I can maybe try and get in touch with my client, see what their inclination is?
I don't have a problem with that. Do you mind waiting?
Well, I just wanted to clarify something.
Yeah, yeah, please, could you, go ahead and recognize yourself.
So John Green, Tentara Road. I just want to clarify, and first off, I appreciate the board, I appreciate Mr. Tallaman and everything that has been said here so far tonight. I just wanted to clarify that the original project in 2015 was very similar. It was large buildings on the lot lines, much like it is today, access through Blackthorn, full access like it is now, access through Flag Road, and the covenant is what changed the project. So those townhouses you saw were a function of the agreement that then came after, right? So the original plan caused the covenant in the agreement. The original plan was big buildings on the lot lines with traffic through the neighborhood like it is today. So it wasn't the townhouse version, right, and then the covenant. It was the buildings on the lot lines, traffic through the neighborhood, then the covenant, then they changed the project. That's how that happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I just think there was some confusion as to, we're talking about the townhouse project being what we agreed to with the, well, not that I agreed to, but some of the neighbors agreed to with the covenant, right? But that's not the case. It was the original plan, which was four, five-story buildings. It's the same crazy plan that they threw out there this time, right? And that's where the agreement came, so.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that you understand it wasn't a townhouse project to begin with.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're requesting a recess?
Just a brief recess to get my client.
Okay. All right.
You can give me five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, we can give you, we'll give you five minutes.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe I'll do it.
Yeah.
We'll reconvene at 7:58.
Eight o'clock?
Yeah. Okay. 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 All right, we're back now. Go ahead, Mr. Panos.
So what I think we'd like to do is definitely agree, if it pleases the board, to a 30-day extension that would push out your 180-day hearing period, and I can write up an agreement to that effect and submit that through Lara, to consider the options in front of us, not just revising the plan to conform to, to the agreement, but also the idea of holding this matter in abeyance pending the land court action and then coming back determining on, you know, based on what the land court says. I, I'm not sure I want to pursue that, but that's not up to me.
Okay, all right.
My only thing is, if a month from now...
Yeah.
Calendar.
Yeah.
Because that's right up against the holiday.
And you're in the 42B hearing, you're, you're opening as well, right?
You're correct.
Yeah.
In January or December?
One in December.
Oh, when, when is it in December?
When is it in December?
Thirteenth, thirteenth.
Oh, thank God.
But, yeah, in terms of us realistically being back here, I mean, we would be talking early January, Laura, what must it look like?
Yeah, January were good.
January's good for me, but I, it's obviously the petitioner as well.
Uh, January's fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure, just because I'm traveling at the end of the...
I mean, that way, if there are plan changes, it certainly gives you time to, to get that done.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can narrow a date down, that would...
Yeah, I get, I get back the second.
I want to be here. I don't want to remove...
Okay, so is the third too soon?
I could do the third.
The third, I prefer not only because it's my mom's birthday.
Okay. Nice. We don't want to get in the way of your mom's birthday.
All right.
But I, I could do the 10th.
The 10th?
Yep.
I can do the 10th, and it's before...
10th?
Okay, yeah.
And again, to, to be clear, it's not only to consider plan changes in conformance or, I don't even want to say in conformance with the agreement, but that, that would restrict access, because we've argued that we don't agree the agreement is...
Correct. Sure, right, and we're, we're...
But to reform the plans, but also to undertake a consideration of abeyance of the matter.
Correct.
Depending on the land court determination, which means it's on your docket for...
Yeah, I think I...
I mean, do, do what you will with the time, I think, you know, in, in order to hopefully make some progress here.
Yes, I, I just don't want to set expectations that that is the only thing we're going to be considering. That's all.
Right, right. I don't, I, I think we're, we're clear on that.
All right, so January 10th.
Okay.
That would just be a motion to continue to January 10th, then.
I'm gonna just suggest that we have a hand up on Zoom, that we, we take that, just because I, I think we should be fair in regards to public comment, so.
Hearing's still open.
It is still open, yes.
Jamie, you should be able to talk now.
Hi, everyone. Jamie Meath, Love and Lovers Lane. I, I really appreciate all the insight of the board today. I, I was really shaking my head, agreeing with everything you guys said at the start of the meeting. I just want to make sure that with this continuance, that we don't continue to waste people's time. I, I think this is a valid path to take in order to give the petitioner 30 days to think about some options, knowing how the board is feeling. But I don't know when the petitioner was saying, oh, that's not the only thing we're going to talk about. Would it be open to talking about, for instance, traffic plans at the next hearing? Or would, would you just be kind of deciding, are we going to hear this or not, and, and then schedule from there, depending on what the outcome is decided?
I mean, I, I, yeah, I would take that as the 30, the continuation is a bit more on the applicant's side to decide, you know, based on the inputs we've provided tonight and the options that Jay suggested, it's really their time to consider what they're going to do. I don't, I don't know that there's really, there's not really action on the part of the board.
Yeah, I understand what Jamie's referring to about whether it's the neighbors and all, all of our time collectively, the client's time, the petitioner's time, the neighbor's time, we get that, but at the same time, you know, we're here as a board to hear what the petitioner wants to bring forward on the 10th, presumably.
Correct, right, understood, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, just to piggyback on, on that, if it's in abeyance until the land court decides, then we come here, we tell you that, we go home.
That's it.
Right, right, exactly.
If it's a presentation of revised plans, then we do a little bit of what, through you, obviously, the chair and the board, we do a little bit of that 30,000-foot...
Correct, yeah.
...overview again and, and present, so it's all on the table right now.
Okay, understood, okay. Yeah, that's...
I think that makes sense, yeah. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things we could accomplish. We might get, be able to dive into some, some of these reviews, it depends where you guys are. I think everyone's open-minded.
Right. To that point, have you stopped pursuing peer review until this matter gets resolved? I guess as an administrative matter.
I mean, we did, you know, seek, there's, there's a bunch of, you know, proposals...
There's a whole bunch of stuff teed up.
Yeah.
Ready, ready for the board to act on. So the board has, and Laura and David in particular, have been very busy collecting information and proposals, yeah, so no, no one has been wasting their time on that.
No, no, we, we were going forward with it, so...
And I'm not suggesting that, I just wanted to know generally what the progress is.
Right, no, it's a good point.
Right, right, it's a good point, yeah.
Because there were a couple of other things that we promised, and I have a running And actually, even if the plans are revised to change ingress and egress over Blackthorn Drive, this running list will still apply, because it really isn't going to change elements of the development. And that was provide profiles and relationships of proposed buildings to adjacent properties. We are working on that. I actually have a draft that we're, we're prepared to submit to the board, so we will do that. There was a revision requested to the bylaw waivers that we originally included in your application packet regarding more specificity on the waivers sought from your conservation resource area bylaw. We're working on that. I got a draft from our environmental consultant, so we will certainly have those things to you. Was there anything else in that laundry list that I'm missing? Jay, a few of those things were suggested, or a couple of those things were suggested by you.
I think we have to go...
Do you remember?
Yeah, I don't have that list in front of me.
Okay. So I, I just want to be, I want to get ahead of those things too, and as I said, we've, we are ready to present those two items that I mentioned, and if there are more, then at least, you know, we can get working on those things. But we'll see you on January 10th, and...
Someone wants to speak.
Just a point of, point of clarification, I just think, you know, if we're extending or we're continuing the public hearing, that we do get the day-to-day for extension on the, the 180-day period.
He, he said he's gonna write a note on there.
It is gonna be more than 30 days, obviously, because we're going to January 10th.
Yeah, whatever the calculation, the math works out to, you know.
Okay, great.
Definitely.
Thank you.
But I'll, I'll put together an agreement.
Good, thank you.
Howard Rose, Two Bantry Road. Just a point of clarification, if we're waiting 30 days to decide how we're going to move forward, and it may potentially change the project, access, whatever, shouldn't all of that that we just discussed right there be on pause as well until we know what's going to happen? It's a waste of their dollars, our dollars, and our time, peer review, et cetera. Nothing should move forward until we decide what the project is going, how the project is or is not moving forward.
Yeah.
Nothing should happen, there should be no litigation. I had my hand up earlier, we shouldn't have been talking access to traffic until we know...
Well, he, he was answering a specific question, I would say, there. So I, I, I understood what you're saying, let's not go into the traffic study here if we're...
Right.
Right.
We shouldn't go into anything if we're not sure how the product, we shouldn't litigate this, discuss this at all until we know, are we going to discuss it? Are we not? Is it gonna wait 30 days? So everything that was just suggested of, we'll be ready next time to do this, I would suggest, doesn't even happen until we know in 30 days what, how it's gonna, how it's gonna go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
John Green, Tentara Road. Just something that came up with Howard's comment, shouldn't we be going back to the first date? Because if they're gonna come back with a new plan, we should have the full 180 days from when that happens. It shouldn't be 30 days, we've already wasted 30 days to begin with.
My, my, my sense is that if they make changes, there's still gonna be a substantial amount of similarity between the, the plans, but I, I'm less worried at this point in time of the 180 days, we're capturing this particular period. I think we have a lot of time to act, so I...
I'm just thinking that, that, you know, if you consider when we started and where we are today.
I, I understand the point entirely. My, my, my general experience is if we get close to the end and we still need some peer review done, then we ask for the time, then it's gonna be forthcoming. I don't, I don't view too often the 180 days as a particular concern. Do I like being constrained to 180 days? I don't. We wouldn't be if this was a special permit, but I still think that the 180 plus the 35-odd days that we have here, or 30, 40 days that we have here, is still gonna be pretty comfortable for us.
And I would think the plan would have to be substantially different, because it would have to look more like the end, one that was considered legally untenable because of the 40A, right? So that, that's where the plan would have to go, because that's what the covenant got us to. Covenant got us to...
Well, where the covenant got you to and what the covenant prevents are two different things.
Okay.
I'm, we're more interested in what the covenant prevents, and...
Right.
They probably have some freedom to design within those goalposts there. I don't think we'll know until we see it.
Okay, but part of it was getting the large buildings to a...
I see that, that, that was the, the, the end result, but...
Well, to a certain size and off of the lot lines, correct? Because that was also part of that covenant, or in the covenant. It wasn't just traffic.
If there's a requirement in the covenant and they want to live with the covenant, then it would be policed for the covenant, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Jonas Lindon, 39 Flag Road. Thanks for having this meeting. So I want to make sure that the truck exclusion that's now in effect on Flag Road is considered in this project?
I think that's getting more into the substance, again, where...
Is it or not?
It is, well, that is, because, I mean, what we're talking about here is, is a 30-day or so paused for them to consider complying with the covenant. You're getting... or so pause for them to consider complying with the covenant. You're getting really into specific traffic details.
Yeah, that's a question I have. Can I get it answered now, or can I get it later?
Not even, no, yeah.
No.
If they can't talk about it, then we can't talk about it either.
Okay. So, when can that be responded to?
If and when they have a project before us that we can consider.
Okay. Which, okay, good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We just, what we need to do is continue the hearing now, don't we?
Yeah, just a, yeah, just a quick motion to continue.
Okay. So, you know, we just need a motion to continue to January tenth, twenty twenty-four?
Are you making the motion, or are you asking?
No, I'm kind of halfway, aren't I? I'd rather you...
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to continue this hearing to January tenth of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All right, motion has been made to continue to January tenth, twenty twenty-four with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay, thank you. We'll continue this on January tenth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
I believe the snow is not flying.
Well, hopefully.
It is.
Well, I can walk.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just to be, just to be clear, we still have...
Let's not trouble trouble, Jason.
We still have to do minutes.
Let's not trouble trouble. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Hopefully, we have snow.
That'd be awesome.
Oh, my God.
Not my day, but just...
No, no.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Want to hear my voice at least once?
Okay.
I misheard two of you.
Yeah, right. All right, the next item.
I, yes, I have them on my... So, I'm not in the office Thursday, Friday, but I will make sure one is available.
Okay, so, we have just, the other item we have on the agenda tonight is the minutes from the previous meeting that we had here, right?
Those were long.
They were extensive. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look through them. I took a look through them. There's just a ton of detail in there. I had no problem with them as written.
I don't either. Like, is it perfect? No. Are we gonna get perfect with that much detail? I don't feel like there was anything substantive where I'm overly concerned.
Okay.
So, I'm inclined to, it's again, like, tonight where the minutes are important for, with respect to the abeyance, with respect to make sure we're not losing any of our timetable. Like, that language is really key.
Yes.
But otherwise, it's, it's, we're gonna do in ten minutes.
Oh, yeah, totally. No, no.
So, we're a lot of minutes. Of course, I checked my comments.
Right, of course. I literally searched under Robbins.
Did I say that? It's like, did I say that? Yeah.
Doug, Doug, did you, were you okay with the minutes as drafted?
Yeah, I don't, again, I would agree. I mean, it's, they're never gonna be exact or perfect, but I didn't, I was fine overall.
Yeah.
I think, I think Laura gets pretty close to her.
That's not to say they're not exact and perfect, right?
No, I really like the tone when you, the tone of how you interpret our notes. I like your tone in writing, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted? Yes.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Those opposed, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay, I don't think we...
Have to adjourn.
I always have to check with you.
Just a motion to...
Okay, all right, so we don't have any, so we don't have Paul DePrano, so we need somebody else to take...
Make a motion to adjourn?
We'll see in a few weeks.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it. I second it.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, Doug and Doris, motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
End of the meeting, thank you.